All right, I've got four o'clock and I see we have a quorum. So I am going to call the City of Hillsborough City Council meeting to order. First item up on our agenda today is is our consent agenda. And did everyone receive copies of the minutes of our last regular city council meeting? And did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? And is everybody aware of the appointments that are being made today brought forward? Are there any questions, corrections, concerns, comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
The move.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We now move into our first public comment section. And I do see we have one member of the public online, but I believe he's online for mowing bid section.
Probably so.
But if anybody that's online or in the room would like to speak, now's the time to make yourself known. Unmute yourself. We'll give Mr. Funk a chance to connect. Okay, public comments, if anybody wants that's online wants to comment, please unmute yourself. I don't see anybody taking that action, so we will move on. And we now have our department head annual report. And Mr. Avery Unruh, our golf course superintendent is at the podium.
I'm gonna do a screen share with Avery. Make sure that we get this. Fair enough. Okay, now go ahead and.
Quite see it from here, is that the present button?
There you go.
Sweet. This doesn't seem to be, oh, there we go. Alright. Yeah, so first of all, I just wanted to thank council and everybody else for the support that we receive out at the golf courses. Much appreciated. The board wanted me to tell you thank you and. But yeah, without further ado. Keep going. This is the first green. I took this picture on a walk with my wife last last summer. And I just thought it was a beautiful picture. So wanted to share that with you guys. Just the progress that's been made since Gary took over thirty two years ago. It's it's pretty amazing. Going from what was first sand greens to now Zoija grass fairways and beautiful back grass greens. But yeah, Gary retired January first. That was a major milestone for him and his wife. And for me, as I took over as the new golf course superintendent. And he spent nine months training me to take on his duties and responsibilities. And there were a number of them because he not only was the superintendent, but did a few other things in the city as well. In two thousand. Started two thousand eighteen into two thousand nineteen. We started the transition to Zoija grass fairways. And the city put up a lot of the money for the grass seed that it needed to take on this project. Because this was a very expensive project. But yes, this is what they look like now. It is a huge difference to what they look like because the first year we got five inches of rain in two weeks. And it just, oh, it was more than that. It was like eighteen, I think it's eighteen inches of rain in like two weeks. And it just washed all the seed out that first year they seeded. And so finally, they're looking like they should. And this year, I hope even better than last. There we go. Some of the major benefits to these new fairways is water conservation. We are actually saving five to eight million gallons of water a year now. We have a limit set at around nineteen and a half million, but yeah, we have significantly cut how much water we are using with the Zoija grass fairways because they are very heat tolerant. The Kentucky bluegrass that we had before took a lot of water to keep them from drying out and becoming patchy in July and August. But yeah, the fairway project started right before COVID nineteen hit. And we closed at the beginning of the pandemic just for safety precautions. And our membership actually took a hit then. But our hope is that these new fairways will help draw interest in from surrounding towns and cities. When Sand Creek was built in Newton, our membership membership took a hit then as well. And so we're hoping that we'll be able to draw some of our some attention from from Newton and places like McPherson as well. Future projects for two thousand twenty two, we'll have a lot of smaller projects done like we'll airify greens and do some sand trap work, stuff like that. And a lot of that will be done by the Golf Course Association and volunteers, most of those members. And then with other city departments. We're looking at redoing the welcome signs. Been working closely with Matt, Dale, and even Todd on on those. Hospital driving range project coming up. That was a government project that was, I think, presented to you guys.
They haven't seen that one.
They haven't seen that one.
Probably won't because it ends up being at the golf system.
Sounds good, but that was one of the government projects. And that group is actually going to present tomorrow night to the Golf Course Association Board to maybe find some approval from them because it looks like there's possible funding for that project. We're looking at putting a fence along the park. We took out the old one. It was becoming, it was more of a safety hazard than anything. Boards were starting to break off and from people climbing on it and stuff like that. So we took out the old fence. We're hoping to replace that. We already have fencing for that. And that's mostly just to keep people from going from the park to the golf course. We have a lot of families that, since that fence is no longer there, that think that they could just kind of wander across. And when somebody's teeing off of the third tee box there, that can be a hazard. So gonna put up a new fence, tearing down the old well house along Ash Street. And then cutting down disease trees is something that the electric department goes with quite a bit. Those are just a few of the smaller projects.
What kind of fencing group?
So if you go out to the driving range out by that cart shed, we have that white that white fence out there, what do they call it?
Is that a plastic?
It's a plastic material, yeah, but it it lasts a long time. It's not really meant for climbing on. So if I see people climbing on it, I might mention something to them, but but yeah, we're hoping that we can get that put up here quick because a lot more play, especially today, people aren't playing today. So. So yeah, this is the driving range project that I was kind of talking about. This picture here is kind of, so this this entire driving range here is all turf. That's not what we're looking at doing, but what we're possibly looking at doing is adding turf greens like this out as targets for people to hit to. And I thought giving you guys some numbers would kind of kind of help give you a visual of what we hope to see done. But we sold just over one thousand buckets of balls last year. And that doesn't include what the Tabor Tabor golf team uses. The Tabor golf team pays us a larger sum each year to use the driving range. But this is just from the general public with publicly sold about a thousand buckets of golf balls. And we sell those at two dollars a bucket. You can do the math on that. But we're hoping, and my goal would be to see this number increase. And possibly this number increase to to help front some of the costs of making improvements out there.
But what do comparable driving ranges charge? It seems pretty pretty inexpensive to me.
This is pretty inexpensive. You go to Heston, you're gonna pay probably four or five bucks for a bucket of balls. And they have a pretty decent driving range that people use from, I mean, people from Newton come over and use it and then the surrounding area. And that's kind of what we're hoping to do. We're hoping to kind of draw people into our practice facility.
Sure.
So they feel, yeah, like they can they can come and become better at their golf game. So this slide, this is just the ways we kind of feel that you guys can help us. One of the major things is capital improvements. We are a low budget course that that doesn't make a lot of money every year. And so these were a few of the projects that we've looked at doing in the past, but have never really taken on just because of finances. New cart paths. We have areas that get pretty wet. And when when they get too wet, we actually close the course to carts just because it can tear up the turf. And so looking at adding new cart paths would allow us to keep the course open to carts when we get substantial rains. Reciting the mower shop, the mower shop hasn't been recited since it was built. And it is becoming brittle and actually when people are playing down eight, they tend to slice the ball into the shop and we have a bunch of holes in it now. So looking at residing the mower shop probably within the next couple of years, that's something that the golf course is hoping to do. Resurfacing the service road. Not only does the golf course use this service road a lot, but the general public as a as a walking path, biking path. And that's the path that runs kind of along Carriage Hills here and back around to the sports complex. But that's the road that I use to get down to the mower shop every every day. New drain pipes under the cart bridge that is up here in this corner of the golf course. That's the creek runs through runs runs underneath that bridge. And the current drain pipes have rusted out and have started to cause some drainage issues. And so looking at putting in new drain pipes there. And that's also for safety reasons, just because if those drain pipes were to rust out too much, that bridge could collapse. And so we want to make sure we're keeping our members safe. Clubhouse remodel, this is just one that I threw on there because I mean, I think it'd be really cool to just host more events out at the clubhouse. And right now it is sitting in the seventies, eighties. And so I think it'd be fun to see that clubhouse remodel, just so it's a space the public can use more often. Driving range improvements, talked about that one a bit, planting new trees. This is one that I've talked about about. We have a lot of pines that are dying on the course and we'd like to replace those those pines. And then also just add trees to the course. There's areas that are pretty open. Would be fun to just add trees in. And then, yeah, I guess. Like I said, we appreciate you guys' support and so just encouragement to to the city to use their municipal facilities. This is our tournament list. And first one is coming up here in a few weeks. Our major tournaments are the Hillsborough Three Person Scramble, the the Men's Club Championship. And pretty much just these these last four year are major tournaments that we host in the year. So August through September is definitely my busiest season. And those definitely generate the most the most money for us as well. This is something I added that wasn't on the presentation that I sent to you guys. I just wanted to kind of share some of my goals and aspirations for two thousand twenty two. One of the things that I'd like to see is is club total increased by five new members a year. I think when before Sand Creek was built, Gary had told me that we were around one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty members. Now we're probably sitting around one hundred and ten on average. And that is something that I would like to see increase. And that's something I'd like to track more as we continue, just to kind of to see that trend where we're heading in the future. It's something that hasn't quite been kept on record in the past. But get to know and learn the names of each member of the course. There's still a lot of people that I don't know, and I think that this would help with that first goal. There were a couple of tournaments last year where we didn't see them completely fill up. So I'd like to see this year, every slot and every tournament fill. Just bring in people from other communities as well to the course. This is something I talked to Matt about. He asked me the other day if we had ever kept records of how many rounds were played a year. And so this is something I'm going to try to keep better record of. We kind of have a sign in sheet that people use when they come and play at the course. And so this is my hope. My hope is to keep track of that, just to kind of see where trends are going. One thing that the Golf Course Association Board is hoping to do myself as well is to add varying heights, textures, and colors by adding bushes, shrubs, grasses, and other trees. This is like adding flowering trees and and different colored grasses. And yeah, like I said, shrubs and bushes as well. And I think that this would just add to the appeal of the course. Redoing those welcome signs up by the first tee box will really help as well because that area has become pretty overgrown. Yeah, but then my goal is, so Bike Across Kansas is coming through June thirteenth, right? Okay, so my goal is to have the welcome signs done by June first with the help of other city departments. And then I kind of an incentive, when I got hired, I told the Golf Course Association Board and Matt that I would take courses, turf grass management courses to Penn State. I started those fall twenty twenty one, and so I'm gonna continue those and hope to finish how strong after, should finish spring twenty twenty three. And so, yeah, and those have been going really well, but other than that, I don't have any questions, talks.
And Gary's thirty two years, you know, I think you found, especially in that first nine months, he he did a lot of stuff.
He he definitely did. And yeah, I learned that. Yeah.
So have you had to make some adjustments for yourself in 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 to doing it Avery's way as opposed to Gary's way?
There are definitely a few things I've had to had to change just to kind of fit my personality. One of those things was going through. I went through all the shops and kind of reorganized, figured out what I had and 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 yeah, what I needed. And so that was kind of one of the projects I worked on this winter was just reorganizing. Because I tend to be more of an organized person, so I really wanted to focus on that. So when I have a water leak in the middle of June, I know where stuff is.
In terms of, you talked about capital and you listed a few capital projects, but what about your equipment? On the from the capital side, how are you how are you set equipment wise? Are you in good shape?
Yeah, I thought about adding that to my presentation. So we have a number of pieces of equipment that are nearing around three thousand hours. And and that tends to be on the higher end of a of a piece of equipment's lifespan regarding mowers and other equipment. And so we're looking to replace pieces of equipment in the near future. We've replaced the motor on our Hustler twice since we've had that. And so that's a piece that we're hoping to to replace in the next couple of years. But yeah, we're actually getting a new fairway mower. This hopefully at the end of May, beginning of June, depending on on circumstances.
I know we've had some some there's been grant, different grant projects or monies available for different things. And you know, any of those that are considered health related. You know, I I don't know if if any of this fits into that, but I want to make sure we're looking at any opportunities. I know, again, I hate to I hate, personally hate the fact that we've got trillions of dollars out there laying around and floating around. But if it's out there, you know, then I think, you know, there's no reason for us not to not to have some of it, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, you know, anything that's that we could use that's available that's I know that keeps putting things on your list, but.
I mean, there, you were right, there are a ton of grants out there. We're actively writing, or just one more right now. But more keep coming every day, it sounds like, so.
So I guess I just want to encourage you guys to keep your eyes open for that. And if we can take advantage of some of that right now while while it's available, let's you know, I know you said in the next couple of years, but sometimes, you know, maybe it's maybe it's sooner rather than later just because of that.
Yeah, that'd be great, but that's something that we would definitely.
One of those things we, Avery and I have been working on, we have a, we have a tree screening fund that was left over from grant money when they did the old highway. And then about sixteen seventeen thousand dollars in money. Yeah. And so what we've worked out because of the tree situation is asked about the trees. It's the city will match whatever the Golf Course Association wants to do with treating those monies. Because they're just, they've been sitting in an account for thirty years now almost, I guess. So we're gonna put them to use buying some trees. And then also Dale's gonna buy some trees too, talked about that. So hopefully we'll have, we got a little bit of money to help with that kind of thing. And you know, anywhere we can help with it, so definitely.
Who else?
Great report. Thanks, Avery. We're excited to to have you in this position and we hope you're enjoying it.
Oh, yeah, it's been good. And I, yeah, appreciate you guys as well.
Yep, we'll see you in thirty two years.
Yeah, we'll see.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it very much.
You're still young in thirty two years, Avery. Long ways out.
Okay, well, that's a good report. We are now ready to hear from Mr. Brent Unruh from the Fair Board. Who has made his presence known.
Sorry, a little late.
Come up to the podium if you wouldn't mind, Brent.
Computerized.
That's all right. Okay, thank you.
I've been here a couple of different times. I think you all. We've been discussing this for quite a while and never really decided to pull the trigger on it until now. But we are going to be trying to create a community building on Marion County, using the four H building. We have approximately thirty five thousand dollars that we have built up to go towards that project. I've written a couple of grants. We've got one accepted for five thousand dollars. I got two or three more out still that haven't heard back from. HVAC system alone that we're trying to install, I think, is fifty one thousand dollars. The electricals, twenty four thousand dollars, not including the the main supply from the city, obviously. But it's a pretty substantial amount of money we're trying to come up with here. So I guess what I'm asking the city for him is a financial contribution of fifteen thousand dollars. Obviously negotiable. And that's something city's still on board with trying to help us out with.
And the fifteen thousand, you see that going in general with the project or is there something specific that you want that for?
That's, that would just be helping with materials, basically.
So your total is seventy eight thousand? So you're asking the city for fifteen of that seventy eight?
Yeah.
You've already got thirty five, is that roughly?
Kind of. Well, I gave the county the proposal last week. I told them that I was really nervous going ahead with the project because I didn't have all the money. It's not my money to spend. The county has agreed to front the rest of the project for forty five thousand dollars at their donation. But that was kind of stipulation where I I have to lower that dollar amount down as much as I can. But they assured me that the project was funded, basically. So.
So I have just a question for for you, Matt, do, and maybe for you too, Brent. But do we have, is the is the power, the current transformers and and power, city power, is that?
I've been dealing with Todd on that quite a bit, actually.
Is that something we're gonna need to upgrade?
The electricity that feeds the school district building is actually the exact same voltage as we need for very model on the other side of the road. So we're thinking about upgrading that whole entire transformer bank that's on that pole already to feed both buildings.
So is that something too we need to?
That would be a cost we'd have to factor in as well. I know Todd was working on figuring out what I, we think it's the the school districts building is basically over overbuilt, over served. So he's trying to figure if he could.
Rob from Peter to pay.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, with, for lack of a better word, because it was the, you know, what what makes the most sense? Lowest, lowest cost, basically, so.
Everything you all know, prices have gone up on everything, so it's kind of where we're at. Just the longer we wait, the more, the less feasible this whole project becomes.
Don't you still have some some of the contracting businesses donating labor and some of that stuff?
Fleming's heating and cooling has donated all their labor.
Yeah, what about Elcon?
And Elcon was going to donate. I'm still not sure if they're going to. He said he needed to figure out how his year was going. He hasn't said he's not, but he also said he's, you know, he committed to it.
I get it. Are there any questions for Brent?
You say capacity of a thousand people.
If you see in there, it says that we're wanting to add one more exit door. To add one more exit door to that building, we can increase our max occupancy by five hundred people. We thought it was very reasonable.
That's a good investment.
We're doing for sure.
Are you planning, is any of this money gonna be used towards the exterior of the facility at all?
That's just basically the materials to get this building up and going where we want it to be.
So you have the HVAC, and I thought you were also gonna do some kitchen, work in the kitchen too as well, right?
That's what we're trying to do is trying to get the building up and going to where we can start taking in rentals. Once we get the rental business established, we can start putting that money towards something else within the building. It's it's a lot to ask to do it all at once. It'd be a tremendous amount of money. No, the answer is no, we're not doing anything to the exterior or the kitchen at this point.
But if we're talking about having events that could house up to a thousand people, bringing that kind of numbers of people into town, that's that's not insignificant. That's a big deal.
But with the kitchen part of that, we have the food's building. That's a very nice kitchen and there's a walkway that will lead right over to the other building.
I get it. Yeah, I mean, sure.
It's possible we can use the other building.
I just remember when we were in here during the COVID days that we were, you were talking a little bit about looking at the kitchen, some of that stuff, so.
There's, the projects are endless on that building once we get started, but.
Yeah. So question for you, Matt, with the city, would would we have fifteen thousand dollars to contribute that we could pull from somewhere?
Take it out of your capital improvement fund. Kind of a bigger bigger conversation is we do have the ability to tap into that ARPA money to the tune of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Which could, you know, if if we were to do that, if that's something you wanted to do, I'd recommend putting that into the capital improvement fund. And so, you know, that money could be used for, we talked about the demolition of one twenty eight, so Maine, this project.
We've got the community plaza.
Yeah, so there's a hundred and forty thousand there of federal money that we already have that could potentially be tapped in to do that too.
So what I'm hearing is that there there is.
Yeah, there's fifteen thousand that are doable. That doesn't take into account if we have to upgrade that transformer, which will be.
I gave me figures between twenty thousand and nine and ten thousand dollars to.
Depends on how big we have to go or how we have to make that adjustment.
He gave me like three or four different numbers to go off of. Between nine and ten thousand for this. What I saw.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll make, we'll make that much back in electrical sales, but
Yeah.
That's something that has to be considered too. So, yeah, I I think you, if the council wanted to do the fifteen thousand, I think you have the ability to do that.
You have, you or the city staff have any objections or any concerns?
No, I mean, there's some logistical questions about like gymnastics facility, you know, they're they're basically, I think you call them a permanent tenant. That's, they just kind of spread everything out and leave it there. I mean, how is that gonna reconcile with renting it out?
So that's also in there. We will. So that's also in there. We will Fleming's will be relocating all the heaters that are in the four inch building right now. They're gonna be going over into the commercial building.
Yeah, because they don't do it in.
The building's actually the exact same size if you were to take away the kitchen and bathroom part of it.
Any questions? Hearing that there are no questions, is counsel ready to take action on this on this request? Is there a motion to approve the request for fifteen thousand dollars to the Marion County Fair Board?
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Driggers. Is there a second? Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries. Yep, thank you. This is this is a big deal, not just for Marion County, but for Hillsboro and all of us, so. No doubt, no doubt. Thanks for your work on this. Okay. I think we're now ready for at least one of our.
Believe Morgan's gonna be joining in.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, Mr. Styles, and let you decide what order you want to proceed.
Okay, so we've been talking and I brought it up at the first meeting in January with you all about the potential. Equipment purchases that we need to be looking at. And one of the things I've asked our public work staff in particular. To do is put together lists of kind of equipment that we've got and what needs replaced, something that we've never really formally done. And this is just part of that process. And so we've got Dale here to talk about. Kind of what they've worked out for twenty two. And Dale, I included that list, the full spreadsheet, so everyone has kind of a look at everything we've got. So you've got a kind of an opportunity now that I would just say that is all the street stuff. Doesn't include sanitation stuff, doesn't include water or electrical, so. Those are kind of the the basics for what we talked about. We are proposing. Well, they'll they'll propose purchasing a new. Well, I'll let you per do the proposing, but we've we've checked out quite a bit of equipment. We've actually altered the plan since we first talked in January a little bit about what we potentially want, so or what would be the most useful, so. I'll turn it over to Dale and let him kind of talk about what they hashed out on.
So I assume you got this paper with, yeah, so I mean, it boils down to. We decided we need to get a new backup. We have one really old one and one not quite so old one. We we went through different scenarios of, you know, we'd like to get a mini excavator. But really, we can't do without a rubber tired backhoe just because you can run it anywhere you want it. But then we decided not to move forward with the excavator this year because the hydro excavator would be. More suited for hot hauling utilities, especially with all the fiber in town now and gas lines and everything else that was ready here. So mostly water and electric, those departments sewer they can find utilities easily without damaging. So. So yeah, we would like to seek bids for a new loader backhoe. We have gotten some estimates. One estimate was as low as a hundred and seven thousand dollars, but I think it's gonna be a little bit more once we kind of get a couple of features on there that we. Would want in that backhoe. And then. We'd like to purchase either new or used hydro vac trailer. I have it around seventy five thousand here on the paper, but it's probably gonna be a little bit more than that for a new one. Morgan's mostly heading that up. I haven't done a lot of research on that because that's more her machine. And so she was looking at new, well, then found out new prices. And so then she was looking at used, but then, you know, the used market's just weird and finding what you want. Don't know if that'll happen or not. And so now she's kind of back to new because of. She demoed a certain brand, a machine that walks brand and. They kind of fell in love with it and other she's communicated with other water departments around and they use that that brand and that style and so. Not that she settled on that, but I think that's the direction she's moving. And then a newer used job trailer, mostly for the street department, mostly for. Concrete tools in operation when we go to pour concrete. Just seems, I don't know, kind of cumbersome. We have a lot of concrete tools. It takes a lot of hand tools to go pour concrete. And we load them in the truck, we unload them, you know, because we don't pour concrete every day. And so we're back and forth and within in our shop, we don't have enough room to really store them effectively. And so we, if we had a trailer, we could just keep them in, we can pull it to the job site, use them, put them back in the trailer and. We don't have to drag them in and out of the shop and it's just, it just makes sense for us, place to store them, place to keep them nice. So we'd like to get a job, an enclosed job trailer. I haven't, I've had my eye on used ones in the past, but they're they've sold, they're gone, so I don't have anything in mind right at the moment. And I just waiting to see. Kind of after this meeting.
Is that something that one of our local manufacturers could help us with or not?
Yeah, we've talked to Shelby with Circle D and. Yeah, he he's a little limited on possibly the width of it. We were wanting to get one that's kind of more or less. The width of the wheels, the enclosure, and his are not quite like that. I think we could talk to him some more. And we need something that's greater than twenty foot long, the inside measurement. We're hoping for at least twenty four. Yeah, we we need to do some more talking.
I'd certainly love to see us use somebody local if we can.
We we've talked to him a couple of different times in the past year or more, you know, well, then of course prices have gone up. But so we we never nailed anything down because we didn't have permission to do it, so so we just kind of didn't talk anymore about it with him. But we can kind of reconvene then. And then the last thing which talking with Matt. Kind of if we go off a two hundred thousand dollar figure for equipment for this year, I doubt we'll be able to squeeze this in there, but. I can always hope. I want I would like to move towards having an excavator and this is a midsize excavator. Eight, nine, ten metric ton would be the size. It's a comparable, similar sizes are rubber tired back loader backhoe we want to get. But with an excavator, just so much more maneuverability and stuff that we can do with it.
You're talking about tracked.
Track, yeah, it'd have rubber tracks or rubber pads, so it wouldn't tear up streets and things, but yeah, we'd have to move it with a trailer. But it's just so much more versatile. When we work on the streets. Almost always our material we load out to a truck and using a rubber tired backhoe, you're just so limited. And it could be used for utilities and most of our apartments for a lot of different stuff. So for forty five thousand, I mean, that's gonna get us a. Not even close to new one, but it'd get us a machine that hopefully it's maybe one of those things where you get one, use it, you can prove that it's useful. And then maybe sometime down the road, you can get a better one, is kind of our. Questions? That's kind of at the matters at hand right now. I'd love to add line four, five, six through about eighty on this. We we had to draw the lines, so that's where it's at.
Unfortunately, we always have to draw a line somewhere. You know, the the key in my mind is making sure that we have a good rotation plan in place so that we can have the equipment we need. You know, and and as Avery said, you know, when it gets to that end of its useful life and, you know, it's starting to be more of a maintenance issue. That we have a just a kind more of a comprehensive plan going ahead. I mean, this is all part of parcel of our financial planning that we're trying to trying to be more be more more aware of and more focused on it. And, you know, this stuff is 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 not, it's not. It's not extra. I mean, this is not, we're not talking about extra stuff. We're talking about stuff that we use every that these guys use every day or they would use every day and we're pretty much, I mean, I understand the concrete. Stuff, but we're doing more projects all the time and, you know, projects are gonna continue to come up. And, you know, so I don't see this as anything superfluous or or extra to me anyway. So any questions from the council comments? I have a question for Matt. If we we've we've done a lot of this lately in the last several years and that's putting together a lease purchase. Program, is that something we could we could look at here?
Yeah, I think that's what you want to be doing, especially on your new stuff. You probably have some opportunity for financing. Either with the company, sometimes you can give a special promotion things with that or through a local bank that's that's been pretty successful with that too. So that's what we would look at, especially for the if you were to go with the loader backhoe and the hydro back trailer, so.
There's. I assume option one is the preferred option. Just making sure that has the right, the equipped that is equipped.
So option one is a we a monthly versus an annual.
So there's a benefit to to doing it annually.
And frankly, we kind of prefer that. And I know in talking with Morgan about the hydro excavator. So that's a that's a really interesting piece of equipment because we have a hydro excavator, but the the nozzles for are much larger than what we really use to do. Pot-holing for utilities, especially with the, yeah, the suction heads on them and we can't. We can't really downsize those. We've tried a couple of different ways to to make that work, but you don't really need to dig an eight to ten inch hole. When you're trying to spot a utility, especially a fiber line. Just don't need to do that. So these are actually three inch, what they're proposing here. And it also has a valve turner, which is something that would be really helpful for the water. But we could see everybody using that, especially electric guys. They they can't really dig a hole in the ground anymore with all the fiber in town. Without spotting those lines and, you know, they've they the company has said that they'll come out and spot those for us, but. On whose schedule are they gonna spot those for us? So that's kind of where we're at. So, yeah, and that one, we definitely want to do financing, same thing with the backhoe, I think. Job trailer, that would probably be a you, that's a fairly expensive piece of equipment.
That's that that's an enclosed trailer, correct? Yeah, like a box trailer of some kind.
And the excavator is kind of a, we hope, maybe, we'll see. Dale's talked to me about that for two years, so.
So what action are you recommending?
Yeah, I would recommend that if you, you know, if you're interested in the loader backhoe, we need to go out for bid for that. So that's one of those things we have to draw specs. I think Dale's probably got the specs pretty well here now. So that would be what we'd want to do. I think we've probably got enough stuff on the hydro back thing. They've done three demos or they have three, one's been done, two scheduled, so they've kind of know that too. We would probably do the same thing when we go off a bit on that. And then if you want to authorize the job trailer, you can do a not to exceed number and that gives Dale the ability to go. Find something. So if you really have three actions there, if you want to do.
Can that be done in one motion or do we need three motions?
You can do it all in one if you want to seek bids for a new loader backhoe and a hydro back truck. Well, you need you really need to to seek the bids. You can do both those bids in one and then first authorize a purchase of a certain amount of another.
So let me make sure I'm at, so are we. Limit of approximately two hundred thousand for this package? Do do we think that leaves you anything to to hope for for your your excavator at that point? That's that's out of the picture?
Not enough, but.
Well, what do you what do you think? What what do you what do you think it would take? I mean, you say forty five, is that is that real?
For for a. Used one, yeah. I mean, I I we were in Wichita a while back and saw one at the cat dealer that was used in. You know, with, oh, maybe this'll, because it was fifteen years old, maybe this'll fit in our budget. But once we found out the price, you know, it's eighty, ninety thousand. You know, and that's. You know, it's from a dealer and prices are a little higher there. It might be a little better machine than some of the private used markets, but. I don't want to throw.
Blowing this out here?
Does the lease purchase then make?
More flexibility, yeah. I would say if you were gonna look at the. Let's let's do the equipment that you're really interested in and then visit revisit the excavator a little bit later.
Okay, my thing, my thing is this, it's it's it's. We have to look at ways where we can be as efficient as we possibly can. We all recognize the situation with labor. You know, it's not easy to get people and so to have people as automated. Equipment wise and making sure that we're not sitting around waiting for something to be repaired. In my own business, we had a major piece of equipment go down and and the manufacturer was telling us it was gonna be four to five months. Before we could get the replacement parts. And fortunately, we have a guy that works for us and his nickname. My nickname for him is MacGyver and he managed to repair that piece of equipment and get us going again, but. You know, it's it's just hard to to manage a business when, especially in today's world, when when you're in that situation, so. I guess I'm not looking to just throw money around like crazy willy nilly, but I also want to make sure we have what we need. And we have the right stuff. And I'd rather spend more to get the right piece of equipment than than to get something that's not right. And end up spending more in the long run for it, so. And I don't see things getting cheaper as time goes on either, so, you know, so that's the other part of it as well, so. That's just my thoughts, so you guys can take that for what what you want. So would somebody care to make a motion that we that we submit bids for the for the backhoe? And for the hydro vac trailer and that we also investigate the purchase of a new job trailer? Is that what we're talking about?
You want to do two, so you wanna. Do a motion to seek bids on the loader backhoe and hydro back trailer, that would be one action.
All right, so would somebody care to make that motion? Okay, Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries.
If you're gonna do a purchase on a job trailer, you would want to do a motion not to purchase a job trailer not to exceed thirteen thousand.
And where did thirteen thousand come from?
Just a number I came up with. You know, looking at some used ones out there, looking at some new ones. New ones are way more than that for what we really want. But just hoping to find a used one that will fit in that. We don't have to have anything fancy or brand new. We're gonna pull it around town. You know, maybe we take it to Wichita to pick up supplies or something, but we're not gonna go in cost country. It's so, it it's just a number I came up with, you know, I'm hoping for less than that, honestly, but.
Okay.
Thirteen and you just can't find anything, then you have to come back.
I guess that's what. That's the bottom where we're at. Okay, so would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll do it.
Councilman by moves, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Driggers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, opposed, motion carries. Yep.
If I can take this opportunity to briefly say about the the bigger list, you know. It's hard to prioritize because there's so many that I want to put a priority number one next to, you know, I mean.
You know, if everything's urgent, then nothing's urgent, you know that, right?
I didn't know that. But I mean, you know, it it's really, it is tough. It because, you know, and we're not in the right replacement schedule. We're we're far from it, you know, and this is a good step, it is. But to get over the hump, it's 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 gotta be a bigger jump, you know. To get into that replacement of of a proper schedule to get a good value out of the used piece of equipment. To get into that replacement of, of a proper schedule, to get a good value out of the used piece of equipment, um, you know? Towards a new piece. And dump trucks is high on our list. It was high before I made this, this little write-up I did. And after this, and we met with Morgan and Todd most of them, what were our needs? And we didn't all quite agree at first. Um, and we, we just had to, you know, a little give and take, and this is what we come up with. So after the, after we came up with this list of the backhoe and hydroback trailer and such, our tandem axle dump truck, the motor truck wraps. And we've decided not to repair it because it's not worth it. And so we're out of dump truck. And we're deciding to, um, wait till next year and just get by. And I mean, that's what we do on a lot of things. We just, we make it work. So anyway, there's, there's more to the list, as you know, without that story, but anyway, so.
You're saying out of a dump truck?
Yeah.
Did I hear that right? They don't have a dump.
We have dump. We have two single axle dump trucks that we use regularly. This was a tandem axle dump truck.
For heavier, bigger loads.
Right, yeah, okay, I will.
Basically twice as much. We bought used from the Turnpike in 16, 1016, I think. It was for that. Now, so anyway, we might have used a few years ago and served pretty well, but yeah, it has internal motor issues that it was going to cost 20,000 to fix and we decided not to put that in.
That's something you're going to use a lot.
That was the main one.
I know you said it was a big one, but that would be a real asset if you had a dump truck.
No, we, we have a couple others, yes.
No, I know that, but I mean a big one, right?
Yeah, we don't have one of that size. Anyway. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you. Okay, we are now into our business items, section G. Uh, first item in that section is ordinance 1344, changing municipal court day and time. Mr. Styles?
Sure. So we were, while we're in there making some changes, uh, wanted to update the court ordinance because we've actually changed that since the last time it was published in the, in the actual code. So, uh, the prosecutor, we've switched prosecutors a couple of times. And so we've had to maneuver these dates around, but we feel like we're pretty solid on the first Tuesday of each month at two o'clock. So, uh, the ordinance just makes that formalizes it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve ordinance 1344 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I believe we approve ordinance number 13.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance 1344 is approved and the mayor will sign. Okay, next item is another ordinance and that is ordinance 1345 regarding council meeting time.
Yeah, it's similar situation. So, uh, at the last meeting, you requested us to bring you back an ordinance that would shift our meeting time from 4:00 PM to 6:30. Um, everything remains the same. It's still the first and third Tuesdays, but this shifts the official meeting time.
Any questions? Hearing none, accept a motion to approve ordinance 1345 and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty? Councilman by?
Yes.
Motion is approved and the mayor will sign. We're now on to our mowing bids section. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So we ended up with five mowing bids. Um, we had, we had a few that didn't quite make it onto the list and then we we ended up getting them back on there and making sure that they all got out there. Uh, so we had Biggest Little Lawn Care out of Halsted. They mowed our, uh, local land and hospital last year. Uh, Plinter Mowing and Outdoor, uh, they had the museum and fairgrounds last year. I think Josh maybe did another one too. Uh, Ryan Heffley and then Mike Dirksen, uh, both visuals from Hillsborough and then Sunny Slope LLC, which is headed Durham, it's Troy Weeby. So we had, not surprisingly, we had an increasing cost from last year. The addition of the swimming pool in Memorial Park also increased that price too. Uh, we had, uh, Ken Carlson last year submitted bids. He was incredibly low. And so that was kind of to be expected, but adding the, the swimming pool in the park or, uh, yeah, the park onto that increased the cost quite a bit because those areas you have to maintain a lot more often. And so we're, I'm, I'm still evaluating area five, which is the fairgrounds, the parking pool and, and the airport to just to make sure that those are financially sustainable. I think the bids for areas one through four or five, I think those forward, uh, have a little bit of questions on those other two. And so I'd like to go back and, and take a look at that, maybe bring you back something on those other areas. Cause I'm not, not a hundred percent comfortable with how the prices came out on it. So, um, as far as what that looks like, if you had one through four, that'd be $9,905 for the season, uh, which is pretty, pretty comparable. Um, we're pretty much what we expected. Like I said before, Ken Carlson mowed those, a couple of those areas was very low last year. So, we weren't expecting to get those back. And so we can maybe take a look at those other areas, but, um, what I'm recommending is awarding one through four to the low bidders. Um, so area one would be Sunny Slope. That's the Hillsborough Heights area, uh, Sunny Slope out of Durham. Uh, area two is the AMPI around the police station. That lot's gotten a lot smaller with EMS there. Um, so it's, uh, Plinter Mowing got that one. Uh, the downtown area is Ryan Heffley, uh, was a little bitter on that. And for Willow Glen and the old hospital, the big, big little lawn care, uh, came out on that one. So, those are the ones that I'm recommending we approve at this point. I'll bring you back some more on March 15th, uh, with the others.
Any questions? Hearing none, would somebody care to make a, a motion that we approve the, the mowing awards for areas one through four?
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Driggers and a second by Councilman Lowen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. The low bidders will be awarded on areas one through four. And Mr. Styles will come back at our next meeting regarding the last two areas, which are the more significant cost areas. Thank you. And now, uh, one last item regarding Mr. Dolkey, which is a roof replacement for the street and sanitation shop.
So we've got, uh, they've, they've been in need for several years. I guess that's probably.
I think the roof has leaked ever since.
Is that when it started?
It's a fair question. I mean.
I don't know.
All right.
Yeah, it, it, it leaks when it rains. It doesn't have any insulation. And when, you know, we have windstorms, it tends to want to lift off the building.
Yeah, the other day when we had a heavy, it was like the building was breathing, you know, the tin was just not flapping, but just, it was moving.
Was letting you know what was there?
It does have some insulation. It's, um, compromised in places and we have skylights, just the, the cheap panels. And it's like an oven in the summer, you know, it lets the light in, the heat in, and it it's just a cooker anyway. Um, but for multiple reasons, we need to look at a new roof. Um, and I've got this estimate from Nelson Fowles. Eldon Head would do the work. I don't know, it's a little different system. They don't remove the roof. They add to it and they add, um, kind of in a sense, purlins on top of the purlins. And then put the insulation in between or over the purlins throughout the roof and then new tin on top and new trim around the edges.
So they're sandwiching insulation between the two surfaces, the old roof and a new one.
So basically, you know, we don't have to be out of there necessarily. And then it's leaving what little insulation we already have there and then adding more. He says it works pretty good. They've done it on Jewish buildings.
With the existing one having its flex, does that concern you at all going over the top?
Yeah, um, but I think, I don't, and I was thinking about clarifying this today and I didn't make the call, but I think the, the, in a sense, the purlin that he puts in goes to the purlin that's already there, not just the tin.
Okay. So tie the.
I think it's structure to structure.
Okay.
So yeah, you're sandwiching.
But yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing. Um, as I was thinking about the meeting, I was like, I should ask about that, but then I didn't make the call, so. But I think that's very.
Did we approach anyone else for pricing?
I have. I can't.
So yeah, that would be your option. I mean, if, if you're comfortable with this one, you can go forward with that. Uh, I would probably suggest you get at least one more. Uh, there, there are several companies you can do something similar, maybe not the same system.
Yeah.
But, you know, you could ask for some more bids on that. We wouldn't want to get permission to go for those bids.
What, uh, what kind of timeframe, if, if it turns out that this particular bid and the company was selected to be, are they able to, to get it done in a timely manner for you or not?
I don't know. I haven't talked to him now for a couple of months or more. I mean, he's usually pretty booked, but he was talking at the time like he could squeeze us in because it's a small deal.
When you say squeeze us in before next winter?
Yeah, I think this year.
Okay.
What, what's the condition of the purlins underneath if they're going to sandwich on top of those?
They're fine, that.
Okay, there's no rust.
You know, or in the structure's fine.
Okay.
It's a ladder truss type system.
Yeah, yeah. What that is.
So it's.
It's an old building.
It's new tin on top. What they'll have is new tin. So it'll just be the, the outside view is just new tin as you can see.
You just see new tin. The, I had, uh, gotten an estimate from Nelson Fowles about painting the exterior of the building before we do a new roof, just because it needs freestep all the way around. Um, that was, I forget now, should have brought that estimate 10,000 or a little more. And I was like, wow, you know? I decided not to maybe go for that one so much. We have an airless sprayer. I thought about just doing it ourselves. Um, I mean, it's at the entrance to one of the, coming off the highway. And I wish it would look better and.
Yeah.
At the least some paint.
Well, I guess that's why I was asking on the roof, that alone will make it look better.
Right.
I guess.
Right, so.
And you estimated about $4,500 for paint.
Yeah. Right, if we buy some good high quality paint and do it ourselves, it could still be, it may be close to half of that. I didn't get real tight with the numbers on just buying paint. So, we've, we've kicked around other things as far as adding on to the shop, adding offices on, uh, you know, so I didn't want to invest a ton of money in the exterior and then you cover right up. I don't, I don't know where we're going next few years with that, but I could paint a bit too there. And that's not part of what you guys are necessarily deciding to night, but it's just in addition to.
You know, we tighten that one up and that's, that one doesn't necessarily need counsel approval by paint.
So what is the recommendation that you're asking?
Well, I, I would suggest maybe going and at least getting another bid and then bringing it back, uh, and making sure that this bid is, is still good since it's been a little while, but, you know, it's definitely something that we need to do. Just make sure that we're in the same ballpark and it hasn't gone up crazy, so.
Okay, would somebody, do we need a motion? Then a vote?
Yeah, I think it would be good if you.
Somebody care to make that motion that we directed Superintendent Dolkey to, uh, to solicit two bids for the replacement of the roof? Or repairs to the roof, if you will, of the, uh, of his shop building? Somebody care to make that motion? Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. You got a lot of work to do, sir.
Spending a lot of money.
Okay, we are now into section H, items for future considerations. Mr. Styles, let's talk about the safety manual.
I just wanted to put it back on your radar. We talked about it February 1st, but it's like a 300 page document. So I didn't expect anybody to read it all the way through first shot. Uh, I would like to get it approved at the March 15th meeting, so I'm just bringing it back to your attention. There's no action, just to make sure that.
Hey, all those that are aware that we're going to vote on this on the 15th, raise your hand.
Hey, there we go. I'm good with that. A little bedtime reading to do.
There you go. All right, next item is the liability and property insurance.
Okay, so we've got our, we have an April 1 renewal with our, uh, insurance. And so we've had a few folks express a little bit of interest about it. Uh, our, our carrier is EMC. It's really the only carrier you have an option for from municipalities in Kansas because it's such a specialized insurance. Uh, and mostly because of the police liability. That's another thing that they, they're the one, only ones that want to handle that. So, um, we've had, uh, that policy for decades and, uh, IMA has been our agent out of Wichita. They provide decent service, but, uh, we've had a couple of people e- express some interest in bringing that back into town. Uh, Kakeem over at the Insurance Center has really been expressing a lot of interest and actually took the time to take our policy and review it and found, and found about $2,000 worth of premium that we've been paying that we probably shouldn't be. Um, and so that's, that's a service that we haven't necessarily seen with IMA. Um, I don't know all the backstory. I know at one point the Insurance Center had our policy and it went to IMA. I know IMA is connected to K-Met and I think that's probably part of the reason why it got moved. But I, you know, I don't really see a reason to necessarily stick with IMA. And so I think we could potentially bring it back. Uh, and you know, Kakeem's knowledge of the city has just proven himself to, to, to provide a little bit of an incentive there, uh, to do that already. So, um, you know, I would say let's potentially shift it back to Kakeem, let him service that policy for us. Uh, at the same, same token, uh, I'd like to take a look at, uh, Midwest Public Risk. They have a seven, one renewal date for everyone in the policy. So, uh, Midwest Public Risk, I guess I should back up, is a, as a pooled risk pool. It's a pool, a risk pool of Kansas and Missouri, um, municipal entities. It's been around for over 30 years now. Uh, very stable, financially in good position. Uh, it's not traditional insurance. It's a risk pool. So you, you basically share the risk by paying claims from your contributions as a member. Um, and then they use a reinsurance product to carry, to carry over liability. That, it actually works a lot like regular insurance, but it's, it's, it's cheaper. You have higher deductibles essentially. And you end up with better coverage, actually, the way it looks like to me. So I would like to move forward with getting a quote from Midwest Public Risk. Uh, and that's a little bit of an involved process because they'll actually basically push you through underwriting. And that they, you know, renew on April 1 and they wouldn't be able to take us April 1. They would have to take us on seven, one. Um, so what we would do is renew with EMC. And there would be, you know, a period of time there where we would have a chance to evaluate Midwest Public Risk and for them to evaluate us. And then, uh, if we wanted to make a decision, we could go with them on seven, one, or we could stay with EMC. Uh, if we decide not to, to, to cancel EMC and go with Midwest Public Risk, there's no risk. It could be month to month. And so it's prorated back to you. Some premiums there are that way. I think there's a lot of positive things with Midwest Public Risk. But I'm not sure. We'll just have to see. Uh, so what I would ask today, if, if you were interested in it, uh, would be to make the shift to have Kakeem service our policy locally for EMC. Um, we're going to renew that policy in April and then also giving me the permission to go talk to Midwest Public Risk to get a quote from them. There's no obligation on that. It's just, it's a little bit of a process.
I am going to, uh, declare a conflict of interest on my, my part as Kakeem was my campaign chairman for my mayor campaign. And so I will actually, I'm going to turn the floor over to, uh, Councilman Driggers as president of the council to, uh, to call a question and, and manage this.
That's good. So we, do, would we have a motion to change the policy to Kakeem and, and approve Matt? We can do those in one. We can do those in one.
Uh, I would do them separately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we, do we have a motion to, uh, move the policy to Kakeem with EMC?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Just like a.
Okay, motion a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? You want me to go do the other one too, or this is back to you, Lou?
I think I could probably handle this one. Um, so now, uh, we have a question regarding, uh, council approval to release the city administrator to sign the necessary forms to get a quote from NPR. Would somebody care to make that motion?
Will.
We have a motion by Councilman McCarty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lowen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? I think we've made it through. And now we're going to talk about pole attachments.
Yeah, uh, pole attachment fee. So, um, I don't know if you know this or not, but anytime there's utility in town that wants to attach to one of our light poles, they have to pay a fee for that. Um, it's usually tied in through the franchise agreements that we have with them. Uh, and our annual charge is one dollar per pole attachment, uh, which is about what the rate was in nineteen eighty. Uh, so we're a little behind on that. Um, and just, just so you have a reference, uh, Vibe is our biggest, is our biggest, uh, pole attach, pole attacher, I guess, person who attaches to our poles and they have six hundred and thirty-six of those. So, you know, that's kind of the, the references to where it is. Um, so I went out and I asked some of our friends around the state, KMU, about what other people were charging for that. Now Marion is still charging two fifty. Uh, Jetmore recently moved up to five dollars. McPherson is probably the most recent one that's changed. It's fifteen. Uh, Gardner at seventeen ninety-five. Harrington last year adopted one hundred dollars a pole, which is like, okay, good for you guys. Go for it. Uh, the national average is seventeen fifty-eight. So, um, uh, you know, I think it's probably something that we need to look at. Uh, I will say that, uh, people like Vibe, they've already paid for this year. So it wouldn't really affect this year, but you know, you can get it into the next year. Uh, I just wanted to put it on your radar because it is ridiculously low. Um, and you know, whatever that advice is, yeah.
It paid through July.
It paid through July. Okay, excuse me. They paid the first half. They paid. Okay. So, you know, we could amend that and make that change. Um, they were seeking an, an additional agreement with us to kind of lock that price in. And that's the reason why I said, wait a minute, let's check. Um.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's a great deal for them. Uh, so yeah, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, and see if there's any, you know, any direction you guys want to go on something like that.
Is there a, like a target price that you're thinking of or?
Well, I think if you were somewhere in, um, McPherson's probably the high, higher, higher you'd want to go, fifteen. Uh, Harrington would be.
That's, that's going to be a big jump.
Yeah, it's a big jump from a dollar, you know. It doesn't. Nothing's, nothing's cheap there, but.
We did it ten times what it is now. It'd be ten bucks.
Right.
That's a pretty big jump.
It's a pretty big jump and that's.
It's not a problem.
How many poles?
Uh, six hundred and thirty-six is what they have, yeah.
That's, uh, going from six hundred and thirty-six dollars to nine thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Wow. Ten, ten, ten dollar poles.
No, that's a fourteen dollar pole job.
Okay, you're talking about going to the.
Fifteen, if we went to the.
The fifteen. Yeah.
So there's, there's things to consider when you do that. You know, the reason it would be so low is that you'd want to encourage people to, you know, make it a low barrier of entry for somebody to come in and provide service. It's not really an issue for us because we have multiple people who provide that service, so.
The pole attachment fee, that money currently is used, it goes to what? To the electric department?
Yeah.
And is it used for pole replacement, pole maintenance?
Yeah, it's such a small number that we've never really directed it into that specifically, but yes, it would pay for that. That's the intent.
But poles do need to be maintained and they do need to be replaced, do they not?
I would say dollars not even get close to covering your costs. Fifteen might.
Get you closer.
Get you a lot closer, yeah.
You know, obviously we went through a similar exercise with Kansas Water Office and the cost of water. When we went from a forty-year con fixed rate contract to a variable, more variable rate contract. And I think, you know, this is just a reflection of, of that. You know, I, I guess at this point I wouldn't see fifteen dollars as being out of line, but I don't know how many poles you can buy for ninety-five hundred dollars.
Not a ton. Just saying.
Not a ton, yeah.
So I mean, that's not, you know, that, that clearly the, the six hundred and thirty-six dollars just doesn't.
We're not, we're not asking them to pay for our poles though. No, I'm just asking them to hang stuff on our poles because we have to replace those, even if they didn't hang anything.
Well, that's, that, that is, that is true. But you know, anytime that you're drilling into or.
Yeah, you, you.
Working around.
Reduce the life of the pole.
You're degrading the life of the pole.
Yeah, you reduce the life of the pole.
I'm just saying fifteen is a huge, huge jump. If we want to really get Vibe mad at us, we could do that.
I don't know that they should be mad. We're still underneath the national average.
And, and what they pay in other places.
Right.
Especially Harrington.
It's not Marion.
Quick win in here.
Well, is, is there, is, is, is there a motion that somebody would care to make? Attached to a rate suggestion?
I, I would, I would move that we change our rate from a dollar per pole to ten dollars a pole.
Okay, to do that, we'll have to go back and write ordinance to do that. So that's what you'd be directing us to.
Okay, so we're going to, so the motion is to direct the city administrator to come back to the council with an ordinance change to reflect a ten dollar per pole, pole attachment charge.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the motion you're making?
That's the motion I'm making. If other people don't like it, that's fine. I mean, they have to be seconded, don't.
We have a motion. Also, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, we have an abstention. All right. So you will come back at, uh,
Yeah.
at the next, uh, or.
Get that, get that drafted up.
So we can get that for the next half of this year. Okay, now we have sewer bod and cod requirements. That's interesting.
Going to get real sciencey real quick here. Um, so, uh, you, you probably don't know this either, but the city code does have provisions for BOD, which is biological oxygen man in the sewer discharge. So the biological oxygen demand is about bacteria, organic bacteria that uses oxygen within the system and basically doesn't play well with our, uh, lagoon process for breaking down things. Um, so when somebody dumps the high BOD concentrations in there, it's, it's like a slug to our system and it makes it really difficult for our, our good bacteria to break that stuff down. Um, so that's the BOD. We also have COD, which is chemical oxygen man. That's going to be for inorganic things. So if someone puts in, uh, well, we've had issues with people putting in solvent cleaners, uh, into this, into the sewer system, which causes foaming in our lift stations, which causes it to shut down. So there's things in there for, to regulate those things. Um, so what happens is that we, well, what has happened is that we actually have a cap on BOD at three hundred parts per million, uh, for five days or reading at three hundred and fifty parts per million for a single use. Um, in those cases, the superintendent is authorized by ordinance to make, uh, treatment, uh, pre-treat, require pre-treatment from somebody or, uh, find, find them for, for, uh, this concentrated wastewater. Problem is that there's a couple of problems. The cap was put in in nineteen ninety-four. That was probably suggested by KDHT or the EPA. Um, it's not real specific to Hillsborough. There's nothing magical about that cap, uh, as far as our wastewater is concerned or as far as the federal regulations are concerned or our wastewater permit is concerned. Um, so it's kind of just, I wouldn't say arbitrary. I mean, it's a good, it's a good number when you start factoring in kind of what that could do to your system. But it's, it's not necessarily specific to Hillsborough. The other thing is that there's no enforcement structure and there, there's no fee, uh, for if somebody is doing that. It really just opens it up and says the superintendent can charge that, uh, which we're not real comfortable with, to be right honest, because that's, uh, that just kind of sets us up in a situation with us versus them. You know, then we get into these arguments about, well, we didn't actually put this down there. Maybe it was somebody else. So there's some, there's some things there. And generally, generally, I would say that generally our, our people are very responsive to us. Uh, we can usually pinpoint who did what, was asking a few questions, making a few phone calls. Uh, doesn't necessarily stop them from doing it. It just, we know what it is. We can, if we can find out what it is, we can treat it. Uh, and we've continued to work with Barkman Honey, uh, and they, they've been great to work with. Um, but it's pretty clear that the BOD limit that's in the ordinance isn't going to be practical for them is there. Um, we've been in the process of designing a manhole there to do some monitoring of that. But we do know data that we already have, that this BOD limit is not going to work. Uh, even if at a small, small fee, uh, it's going to be cost prohibitive for them to do that. So we're trying to get a little bit of direction, I guess, as to what you want to do. I think, I think you need to have some cap, uh, to prevent somebody from coming in and just, you know, wanting to dump concentrated waste into our system. Got to have some mechanism to control that. Um, we also have to have something practical that we can enforce. Uh, we haven't enforced this rule ever, to my knowledge, because we don't, we haven't been testing wastewater coming out of different places. Um, so we would like to start doing some more testing, but we need some direction as to how you want us to enforce this. So.
Like, um, like our, uh, building and zoning codes, we have the opportunity to create variances.
Mm-hmm.
Would that same opportunity exist for something like this, Andrew?
Well, I mean, it's a little more difficult because it's not an established procedure or such a thing. I mean, but it, it's, I would caution against creating an exception for a particular customer.
Okay.
But you know, if you wanted to set up various levels about, you know, the easiest one being residential versus commercial and then, um, you know, assigning a value to the, the, or through the fee structure to try and handle it. You know, that would be a very normal way to do it. And then you can even, you know, delineate it even further if you want to try to assign different sizes of commercial operations and that kind of thing and do it even further. That's, that would be probably the most common way I'm aware of, but I haven't researched it.
Yeah, I get it.
One thing we have here though is, is Bartman participated on sharing that.
Right.
So somebody else came in and had the same BOD load they did and hadn't participated. That's some why you're trying, you're driving out here right now.
Yeah, yeah. We want to be fair about it. And you know, I don't.
I guess that's where I was driving.
Yeah, I mean, how do you, how do you? Problem is we haven't enforced it, right? And we just, so now we're holding back saying, okay, well, we got to do something with this. How do we do?
So.
Not a great way, honestly.
So do you have a recommendation then?
Uh, what we've talked about with our engineers and Morgan is, is exactly what Andrew was talking about. Maybe looking at doing an industrial or a commercial rate, uh, for, for sewer. Uh, we could wrap some of those costs into that and that would be one way we could handle it. Um.
One, I guess I'd have a question is could you, word in a way where it said, if you're over said level, you'll be asked to participate in the system, which is what we've already asked Bartman to do. Is that, is that a possibility?
You can. It's just a matter of practicality of how do you, you know, if we're not measuring it at their output source, how reliable are our numbers to be able to actually say, okay, now we know well enough that we're, we can charge you extra or whatever.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
With Barkman, we at least we've had, we got data because we've been doing the, the dumps out at, uh.
Sure.
They've been bringing that waste and we've been able to measure that. We have consistently for several years. So that, that was the reason. You, but you know, if we get into a situation where the hospital, for example, goes into that lift station and they start putting in some industrial cleanser, uh, you know.
You wouldn't know it.
We wouldn't know it. We would, what we would do is we'd start tracking it back to, you know, whoever and asking questions. So if we did that, we would have to do some sort of monitoring. So I just.
Questions, comments?
This one's a tough one. Uh, so yeah.
I guess, uh, I guess I would suggest that, uh, that the council would direct city staff to come up with a proposal to create an industrial residential sewage, uh, regulate, regulatory document of, of some, some nature that, uh, that would, city, city staff could, uh, use for enforcement purposes and, and give them some, some tangible, uh, direction, you know, on, on, on that going forward.
Could we ask industrial people to, uh, test, have test results? I'm just wondering. I mean, you can, uh, but if they're going to have to pay a higher rate because of it.
Well, I'm not suggesting that.
You want to go for industrial rate.
You know, and, and that's the other thing. I, you know, part of this, what I heard you say was the existing structure or ordinance or, or guidelines suggests this is a limit that we have set that's in some manner arbitrary, okay? And not necessarily related to our reality. And so there's two ways to address it. One is to address that and raise that, that number to, to accommodate and then to come up with something potentially that if you're a residential customer and you're allowed to do X and if you're an industrial customer, you're allowed to do Y, but the, the, the only fee increase would come when you've exceeded whatever the new number is.
Number is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to penalize anybody for something for where we're at today. I mean, we're just trying to, you know, deal with it, with our, with our reality today, right?
Okay, yeah.
That makes sense? Counsel? Andrew? Somewhere in that rambling, there was some sensical comment.
Okay, I think we can work on it.
All right. Is that going to take care of that issue?
Yeah.
Okay, well then we're going to move on to your report, which is fairly extensive.
Yeah, it is. Uh, well, I've been, well, I've been going on last few years. Uh, I'm just going to kind of overview it and so we're not here forever. Um, kind of on the water stuff. So the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, Senator Moran's office worked out a good meeting with them. Uh, we've got some direction working with them. Uh, so I think we're going to potentially be looking at some, some options with things actually at the reservoir. Uh, working with Senator Wilborn's office, these are our, our state representative, our state senator, excuse me. Uh, they encouraged me to, to submit a Sparks fund grant. Um, and so we put in a million dollar application, uh, for that to, which would pay for a potential ozone pre-treatment pilot program, uh, that would work at the raw water intake station. Um, and so we'll see how that goes. But even putting in that application, it's got some calls from KDHE about working with us on a pilot and some other funding things that are coming. Um, so I think there's a lot of potential there. So we, we've been heard, I want to say that. And, uh, you know, of all the, this, the poking and prodding that we've done with our elected officials seems to have paid some.
I've been really impressed with the response that we got from everybody and that was from Senator Marshall, from, from Senator Moran, from, uh, Senator Wilborn at the state level and also Representative Owens. You know, every one of them has been more than receptive and, and actually taken action on our behalf, which is quite nice. It's very much appreciated.
Very much so.
I think that's cool, that ozone pre-treatment idea.
Yeah, the state's never done it. Um, they, they allow ozone to be your primary treatment. They've never done it in a, in a pre-treatment way. And so.
We'll see. Interesting to see how that works.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes because we only need it three months out of the year.
Ozone doesn't last long.
Right.
But it does its job.
It does. It does a great job of getting into some of that stuff, so.
In the world of water treatment, that would put us on the map because, uh, we would be leading the way for Kansas, for the state of Kansas.
That would also help with zebra mussels, just in case you're wondering.
Yes.
It will kill zebra mussels before it gets to us, but we'd have to have some kind of bar screen or something to keep them physically from moving into our water system. So, uh, uh, speaking of water, raw water intake, we had a, a pretty major issue with it on early, early, early morning on February twenty-fifth and no one actually. Knows about it because we actually handled it before it became a problem. Uh, so we were out there all, not all night. I think they started at like two or three in the morning. Uh, and got to work on it. Uh, there was a situation with our pumps, uh, at the raw water station freezing up. They actually, we called the Army Corps of Engineers and they they sent three people out and they were helping us with it too, so I want to give mad props to them for. Actually coming out in the middle of the night and helping us with it. Uh, but we s- we had the service restored before the morning demand really started, so no one really had an issue. Uh, thankfully, school wasn't in session that day, so. We're able to kind of.
Keep the water.
Keep things moving without anybody really noticing. Yeah, so it worked out really well. Then I want to give the water department. Uh, kudos for that, too. They did a great job working all night to kind of get that up and running before anyone. Forward impacted anybody. Uh, developer meeting, we had a meeting with our town guys. They brought in a developer tour of the hospital and actually spent about. Two and a half hours with them, looking at different properties around town, so I felt pretty good about that. Uh, they have some long timelines for their projects that they do, and so. It may not be something that happens overnight, but we're at least having conversations, and I think they're interested, so that's, that's a positive moving forward. Uh, childcare meeting, that continues to move forward. I think they're getting very close to an agreement with Trinity Church. Uh, on their facility. There's a couple of things that need to work out, but it sounds pretty positive. Uh, had a meeting with HCC on the twenty eighth, that was yesterday, uh, to talk about building trades and early childhood programs. There's some possibility there. We may have to go, we're gonna have to go talk to Butler County too, so. Uh, that's just kind of how their, their system works. Demo contractor, they came out and looked at the MPI building. I had a call with him earlier today, and they're gonna give us a demolition quote, but the. They're concerned about the remediation of anything that's in the basement. There's a lot of unknowns with that, and so. They weren't real sure they could give me anything real firm on that, but maybe just a place to start. Uh, we mentioned the dump truck cratered, and so that was something where we're not gonna fix it because it's not a truck that's. We're fixing. Uh, planning commission met last week. They talked about shipping home containers and, uh, Andrew and I are gonna touch base on Friday to talk a little bit more about that. But they should have something for you guys to look at on April five. Uh, Danielle provided the financial report, which is, which ended up being a really big file, and so it got pushed into the, uh, Dropbox. Uh, so if you need to take a look at all that, we're still trying to work out why it, why it's creating such a large file. So we'll get that hammered out, but it's in the Dropbox if you want to look at it. Sales tax, we got the report for February, continue to have really good numbers. Um, the twenty two number was February twenty two was twenty one percent higher than twenty one, February twenty one. And about thirty three percent higher than the five-year rolling average is just how I kind of measure that. Health insurance.
We know why that's going up also.
Sustained sales, um. I think part of it has to do with some of the larger ticket item sales, say, like the Ford dealerships in the Midwest, the car sales, I think have been going. Pretty brisk. In in town people, and then, yeah, I think part of that's inflation because things have gotten more expensive too, so.
And I think online sales.
Online.
Tax collections have. They continue to, you know, they continue to go after more and more people, so. That that loophole gets is getting closed, more closed all the time.
Yep, we just continued.
I was just curious.
Yeah, it's it's been great.
If those bomb guards come into town or whatever.
It is that, and it's all of that.
Uh, health insurance savings report for the month, we saved sixty five hundred dollars. You can kind of see how that has gone. It's worked very well. Um, and so we've got the total for since July of about thirty thousand dollars that we've saved, so. Uh, youth entrepreneurship competition, that's what, that's what YAC means. It's gonna be at Tabor College on March eighth, so the high school, our high school here has two businesses that'll be participating. Uh, Marion High School's got three, and so five total. Uh, it's actually a thing that HTC supports through Network Kansas, but, uh, it's a great competition. It's part of. What we do to encourage entrepreneurship in town. Uh, I was a little, I'm a little disappointed to see that we didn't have quite as many as we had last year or the year before, but that's still a pretty good deal. Uh, local winner goes on to the state competition in April, uh, and they're actually cash prizes, pretty nice. There's five hundred dollar cash prize for the first for first place, so. Yeah, they can actually do something with that, so. Uh, Brooke Carroll, I bumped her from this agenda because everything kind of got busy and I didn't want to be here all night. Um, so she'll be here on the fifteenth. Uh, website, CBB's been talking a little bit about that, and we decided that we need to move our websites. A different platform and do a refresh on it. We we did a rebuild last, now about twenty twenty with Baker Brothers. And we we still have some issues with the usability of it, and the look is infinitely better than it was. Uh, but the backend stuff doesn't. Work super great for us, and so we want to push it on to Civic Plus platform, which is very user friendly and actually pretty inexpensive, so. We're gonna split the cost with the CDB in the city, and, uh, we'll have more on that as it comes forward. Uh, and then our phone system, we had the phone system, uh, our voicemail card, uh, tanked the other day, and so we had to have. The guys from McPherson come out and look at it, which ended up being about seven or eight hundred dollars, I think. Yeah. So, uh, what we'd like to do is move that to a wipe system, but it turns out that we may be able to take this box that we have in here and turn that into a wipe system. We are currently running version four, and they're on version twelve. So. It might be an opportunity to do that a lot cheaper than just going over the whole wipe system. And then I've got two others. Sure to talk about, uh, Bike Across Kansas is gonna be coming in on March fifteenth.
Oh, I mean.
Yeah, the Bike Across Kansas group here is gonna be coming in to talk to you guys to get permission. To use, uh, the Scheffler House for, uh, their their beer garden and reception area. It's right next to the high school where everyone's gonna be staying and right down the street from the beer or from the campground. Um, so it's kind of ideally located, and they've been kind of circling this wagon. I met with them. Uh, earlier this afternoon to talk about it, and so they're gonna come and ask you for that. So you're, if if you're interested in allowing that, they're gonna ask for a temporary.
How's the Lutheran church feel about that?
Well, that's that's the first question I had, um, and so they're gonna dare and answer that question. Uh, the the agency that would be hosting the beer garden piece would be the Golf Course Association, where he has their license, but. Uh, you would need to give him permission to do that at the Scheffler House.
What about being so close to the school? Does that jump any lines?
Question. We'll have to work through that, too. It's a temporary one day thing, so.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Because it's temporary.
In schools, not session.
Uh, and the last thing is special meeting, if you want to do it, uh, for Mr. Canole seniors to present. Uh, I think we'd have two presentations from the senior class, and they are looking at March ninth, which is next Tuesday.
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, eleven fifteen AM. So if if you're wanting to do that, we would need to set a special meeting to do that as a full group. Uh, if you don't want to set a special meeting, we can still meet with them, but not all of you can be here. So it really kind of comes down to if and when anybody can be here. March eleventh, March ninth. Wednesday at what time? Eleven fifteen AM. Barney, are you?
I think I'll be okay.
Shoot me an email to remind me what time.
I would have to do official notice, so, yeah.
Yeah, we do that.
We have time for an official notice?
Yeah, we do. We have to do it for forty eight hours, so.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that, so.
Okay, you will have to, you'll have to think.
Okay, so, so, um, we will, uh, the question is, uh, that the mayor. Who, who, who are we directing to call a special meeting, me?
Well, you're you're doing it officially as a council.
Council, okay. Council's calling a special meeting for the purpose of hearing high school, uh, government class presentations. On Wednesday, March nine at eleven fifteen AM. Would somebody care to make that motion? Don't everybody jump in at once? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Driggers. Is there a second? Second from Councilman Lowen. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are now into our final public comment section. Is there anybody that would care to address the council? If you're online, please unmute. If not. We will move on and, uh, go to council comments. So Councilman By, any comments?
Uh, just, uh, keep the Tabor community or Blossom prayers heard about erect this weekend.
That's all I got. Okay. Councilman McCarty? Councilman Lowen?
Nothing to add.
Councilman Driggers. Uh, along with that, uh, some of you may or may not be aware, on behalf of the city, I did, uh, give an interview with, uh. Channel ten KKE yesterday regarding that, uh, that horrible incident involving Tabor students that happened early Sunday morning. And, uh, just to let you know that, uh, we had first responders, our fire department and police department involved in in working that scene. And, uh, on Friday, we will be having a debrief because we had some rookie firefighters that had not been to a fatal fatal. Uh, accident, worked a fatal accident, so we're going to extend them an opportunity to talk that through and. And anytime those things happen, we want to make sure that our first responders know that they have our full support and that we will, uh. Uh, get them whatever help they may or may not need as a result of of dealing with those things. So. Um, and then lastly, I'd just like to extend my, uh, on a positive note, extend my congratulations to. Our new USD four ten superintendent Clint Corby. And our new, uh, USD four ten middle high school principal Tyler Weinbrenner. Coming back to Hillsborough, which is exciting. And finally, our new Hillsborough USD four ten elementary principal. Nathan Hebert, so, uh, congratulations to those individuals and, uh. We continue to have a strong leadership team at USD four ten, and and that's nothing but good for our community, so good for our kids. Anything else that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.